My name's Paul Moore and I'm going to be moderating tonight's discussion. And before I get started, I'd like to welcome everyone first for taking time out of their busy day and most of all for these five candidates for deciding they wanted to participate in this. Obviously, as we all know how important the school district is, so thank you for jumping in and deciding you want to be part of this. Before we go, I'm going to move on. I'm going to read the ground rules so everybody understands. I know the candidates have gotten the ground rules, but just so the audience knows as well. Before this started, they drew one through five and Bruce was fortunate to get one and Jeanette was the first one. Unfortunately, she got five. So, all that means is opening statements will start with number one and go to number five. And then we'll go to the questions and they'll each have three minutes for their opening statement. And then number two, Matt will address the first question first and then go Jamie and Jim and Jeanette and then Bruce. So, as the questions are asked, we'll just move down the line. So, by the fourth question, Jeanette will be first. So, and they each have, like I said, they'll have two minutes to address each question. So, it's important to see the two young ladies down in front here is when they, when Ellen puts up the 30 seconds, you got 30 seconds to talk. If the blue comes up, that means stop. And if you're still talking after that, I'm not sure what we're going to do. But please be mindful of that blue card because we, in order to respect the other candidates, please try to keep your comments as close to that blue card as you can so we don't go into someone else's time. We're going to, we're going to probably address five to six questions. So, that's probably going to be our hour. We're going to stop the question and answer at quarter after. So, we leave enough time for their closing statements, which will start with Jeanette since she was the last one with an opening and end with Bruce. So, so like I said, I think the most important thing is we keep moving along and try to cut your comments off at when the blue card goes up. If the question, I have three questions that have already been brought to me. As we always have in the past, if you do have questions to ask, raise your, there's cards in the back that you can put them on. And if you have a, have a question already, raise your hand and either April or Kim down here will bring those up. The important thing to remember on questions is where they're going to pick those questions out and we're not going to pick ones that are specific to a candidate or candidates. We were going to address general questions. So, Kim and April are going to pick out which ones to ask in the remaining three or four. I'm just going to read them off. So, please keep your questions general, but yet talk about the issues that we all want to hear about as best we can. So, that's all I had for opening comments. Kim? Oh, one technology thing, please turn your cellphones off if you would, out of respect for the folks up here. Thank you. Okay, Bruce, do you want to start with your opening comment?
Sure. Good morning or good afternoon or evening, everyone. First of all, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for coming out and braving the cold weather this evening. It is nice to see so many faces, a number of you I know. Moved to Hudson about six years ago and grew up in Luck, Wisconsin. Had a wonderful family back there. Still get back there quite often to see many of my family and friends. When we moved here six years ago, moved out into the Holton area, got involved in the church out there. That was our nice little community for, for Sarah and I. And then we have Ethan and Andrew. Ethan is a 10-year-old, fourth grader out at Holton. He's waving in the back. That's my proud little guy back there. And Sarah and Andrew are, we had a divide in Concord tonight. We have a concert that Andrew's in, in first grade out at Holton this evening. So, we had really done our research when we decided to move here. One of the first questions that we started to ask when we looked around was what community has, you know, some of the best schools? And when we decided to move to this area, Hudson was hands down the location that people stated. So, we made the decision. We haven't looked back. We've absolutely loved it here. About a year and a half after we kind of got our feet planted, picked up a flyer at one of the schools, actually at this school, when I was dropping my boys off, to get involved with junior achievement. And been very involved with junior achievement in the Hudson area here. Joined the board immediately and from there, within the first year, I was asked to chair the board. Was the board chair for three years during that time. And we had some very good improvements. We raised some additional funds. We got some more folks involved. We continue to challenge and expand the programs that we brought to Hudson here for junior achievement and continue to do that. I did get recognized and was asked by the Junior Achievement of the Upper Midwest CEO to join their board and just did as of July. So, that's been pretty exciting for me of getting some additional experience. At the time that I was on the JA Board, met a gentleman from Rotary and he said, hey, I think you should come check out our club. And I did that and been in Rotary since, I guess I was inducted February of 2010. So, have really had a great time getting to know a lot of people in the community. I'm very passionate about the education that our kids continue to receive here. Very passionate about my kids continuing to get a great education here. And I think that the skillset that I bring from my business background as a vice president with R. Donnelly in the sales side for healthcare really brings a good bind of vision and strategy to work through some of these challenges that we have with capacity. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Matthew Carey. I moved to the Hudson area about nine years ago. Had really no intentions on getting involved in the school board. My wife and I actually moved here without children and ours had grown and we ended up taking on a couple of grandchildren. And as we were taking on the duties of that and bringing them back and forth to school, we noticed a problem right away when we were told that we weren't sure if our granddaughter, kindergarten at that time, where we were going to place her as the schools were packed. So, I, I right away knew that we needed to address space issue. I'm not convinced that it's been addressed fiscally responsibly. So, that's why I decided to run for school board. I am a tax accountant and just believe in fiscal responsibility. So, thank you. I'd like to thank the current school board for the work they have done. It is a daunting task, I know. And I'd like to thank the two that are, that have served, that are not seeking reelection. Thank you for your service and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matthew. Jamie?
Thanks, Paul. I want to thank the parent groups for sponsoring this forum. And before I tell you why I'm running, tell you a little bit about myself. My wife, Jean, and I have lived in this community for over 22 years. We've lived in North Hudson the first 10 years we were in town and now have lived in the town of Hudson for 12 years. We've raised three kids here. Our oldest graduated in 2005 from Hudson High School and is now a registered nurse. The younger two graduated in 2010 and 2011 and they're currently students at UW-Stell. Myself, I was raised in Southern Wisconsin, in Green County and a farm in the New Glarus School District. Went to college and law school in Wisconsin. I was a prosecutor before we came to Hudson. And now I've been practicing law with the Loman Abdo. It was Loman Nelson when I was hired almost 23 years ago, but with Loman Abdo and practicing right here in Hudson. So, why am I running? I guess two words, community and service. Some examples of why I've served or how I've served in this community. Many of the people in the room have had similar experiences, but it's kind of a cumulative thing. I've coached in the boosters, coached with the soccer association, the YMCA, counseled kids with the youth in government. Been a Sunday school teacher, confirmation guide at Bethel Lutheran Church, a member of parent-teacher organizations, and volunteered in the schools in many ways. From reading to elementary and middle school kids to currently mentoring a Strive student, which is a great program at the high school. And I've lectured to hundreds, maybe probably thousands over the years. When they had the driver's ed program at the high school, I do that a couple of times a year and dedicated day to talking to the kids about the law and driver's ed. But not all my service has been in the grassroots level. It's also been leadership. I've served at the Bethel Lutheran Church Council, been the president of the council when we were looking for land and ultimately purchased the land that Bethel Highlands is at now. I've also co-chaired the first two capital campaigns. We're now in our third capital campaign there. At the school level, co-chaired the online graduation party, currently serve on the Hudson Safe Board. And I'm also president now of Hudson Daybreak Rotary. I was a member two years before they asked me to serve and get in line to be president. Now, I've been a member, I guess, three years. My math is off here. But it was 2007 when I started and now I'm currently serving. So, all of this areas of service, nearly all of them anyway, has been a connection to youth. And that's why I'm running for school board.
Thank you, Jamie. Jim?
Thank you. It's been said already, but I'll say it again because my mother would be disappointed if I didn't. Thank you for coming out on a very cold night. And thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to the parents group for inviting us to be here. Some of you may have read my recent position statements in the Hudson Star Observer and the Hudson Patch. And I have to tell you, since then, I've been approached very enthusiastically on many fronts by people, in the grocery store, at the fitness center, at my place of worship. And for that, I'm sincerely grateful and very humbled by that. To reiterate my vision, if you have read it, there are four pillars that I would like to expand on. Participation, accountability, collaboration, and transparency. Participation, in the case of participation, all community members have a vital role in continued strengthening of our schools. We need this participation to make sound decisions at the board level so that Hudson schools are well-positioned to finish the 21st century on top. This participation of the community, it'll energize our school system and it'll be a beacon for people to move here because of the energy that they feel from that. Accountability, this is a collective responsibility managed by strong, accountable leadership. And it's the role of the school board to help provide such accountability to two different groups of people. One, of course, are the families with children in our school systems. They look to the school system to provide the very best possible academic, social, and athletic opportunities. Now, the second group, empty nesters, singles, and retirees. These folks look to the school system to see that the taxes levied upon them are being spent with strong stewardship and fiscal responsibility. Collaboration, consensus, and cooperation among all participants leads to successful outcomes. Much like our teachers need the finest curriculums and tools to take the education level through the 21st century, we need all willing stakeholders, board members, teachers, administrators, students, and citizens. That will lay the foundations for future success. I doubt that anyone here will say we don't have space limitations in our schools. And on this issue, I have voiced my disagreement, not on the need for new schools, but on the processes used, which leads to transparency. How we address these issues is key. We need an open, transparent process to progress forward. I call this participation, accountability, collaboration, and transparency, P-A-C-T. My pack to you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Jim. Jeanette?
Thank you, Paul. Good evening. I would like to thank the parent group as well for hosting this discussion. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Jeanette Kuns and excited to be running for a seat on the school board this year. As a parent of a second grader in North Hudson Elementary and a freshman at the high school, I, like you, have, excuse me, education is certainly a priority for me. We have lived in Hudson for over 13 years where I have been active as a business owner and a volunteer in the community. I'm passionate about the quality of education for the children. And in addition to volunteering in various capacities such as junior achievement, I have also spearheaded the formation of the Hudson School of Gymnastics Booster Club. I've donated extensively to the hospital and I have attended several Board of Education meetings and extensively researched the issues. I believe this active participation, along with my business acumen, prepare me to make a meaningful contribution as a member of the board. And in the essence of time, if you'd like to know more about me personally, I've left a brochure at the back table. So, being an effective board member requires collaboration and creative thinking to ensure our resources are invested in our classrooms and that our tax dollars are used effectively and efficiently. One of the most important skillsets I possess is my ability to listen. God gave me two ears and one mouth and I intend to use them in that proportion. I consider all information presented before me and all stakeholders involved before I develop an action plan. As a local business owner for over 13 years, I've been accountable for fiscal responsibility down to the penny in presenting plans to bank boards for financing. I've learned how to be a good negotiator and I've asked important questions like why or why not, when initially I might have been told no. On a global level, I'm acutely aware of the need for our students to be savvy and prepared to compete for those jobs. I recognize the need for diversity of voices on our school board in order to compose creative solutions and manage our limited resources. So, my goal is to make Hudson a stronger visionary district that provides exemplary opportunities for our students, but do so in a fiscally responsible manner. I look forward to hearing your questions tonight and providing you with a clear understanding of my perspective. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes opening comments. First question, Matthew, you'll be the first one to go on this one. Like I said, two minutes, please, for each response. Please express your views of the secondary space solutions currently under consideration by the school board and how will you join in this already underway assessment process, Matthew?
I was against the dog track. I do not believe that fiscally we should be spending $90,000 on a new high school. I do know we have space issues. I know that there have been other avenues that have been talked about. I've done some research a little bit on it, talked to a few school board members about the STEM schools and maybe doing something along that line to help our kids with a stronger education. I'm not sure. I don't have the plan as far as how that would work as of, you know, right now. But when I would ask any of the school board members or ask other, other people involved with the, when we were building the dog track, my, my question is always isn't what are we going to do there? My question is what are we going to do with the space we already have? Because if we're going to just build a four-year school and not be able to utilize any of the spaces that we currently have, now we're going to be asking our, our fellow taxpayers for even more money to renovate the space that we have so that we can utilize the space. I think we need to, to ask our teachers maybe a little bit more on the space issues. Get the teachers involved. The teachers are with our kids more than any of us. I asked one teacher if the senior high would work for a junior high and that teacher told me it would not at this point. We would have to do some renovating. Again, asking the taxpayers for more, for more money. I just think we need to look at different options. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Jamie?
Well, first of all, as somebody who has spent a fair amount of time at the high school, probably one or two times a month I'm there and it has been there between classes, you know that we need to do something about space at the high school. And I know the same thing is true at the middle school, even more so that they're over capacity. The three options that are currently or that were talked about by the school board, now they've had these citizen advisory councils, which I'm very much in favor of getting input from our community on this. We had a task force back in 2004. Those recommendations are going on nine years old now. And I don't think we need to revisit all 37 options that were looked at nine, 10 years ago. But I do think that we need to have options across the board. Right now, the three options are a four-year high school where we would turn the current space at the middle school into a two-year facility and the high school and would be a two-year facility. That would be basically seven and eight. And then the middle school would be five, six. We'd be pulling fifth graders out of the grade schools, which are not overcrowded this time. That's the four-year option. There's the three-year option, which would then convert the current high school to an eight, nine building and then make the middle school six, seven and keep the elementary schools like they are. And then the third option is the STEM school idea, which I think has potential. It's thinking outside the box. It would pull 100 kids out of every grade, six through 12. I think that we need to look at how that can be done. How much is that really going to save us? Because whatever secondary option, and I hope that maybe a couple others are still maybe reconsidered, given hard thought with the economy of the way it is. I want to do it a fiscally responsible way, but that doesn't always mean doing it in the cheapest way. And I want to make sure that we solve our long-term solution with a long-term solution, not just kick the can down the road a few years.
Thank you, Jamie. Jim?
Thank you. Certainly in my career, I found that you can have something that will never work all the time, but you can have things that will work a lot of the time. And I think that's the solution we need to find is the things that work for most of the time. Nothing will work 100% of the time. So, when I look at some of the proposals that are down the road, having had two children come up through zero years of age now to 21 and 18, I've seen their emotional and maturity levels progress through the ages that they go to school in. And I think there's just an awful lot of sense to making a split between 10, 11, 12, 7, 8, 9, et cetera, because those kids at this point in time in life seem to be more aligned emotionally with each other. If you take a ninth grader and a 10th grader, for example, a ninth grader doesn't drive for the most part, a 10th grader does. That's a lot of difference between the two of them. And is it best to have them together like that? I like the idea of 10, 11, 12, 7, 8, 9, K through 6. Now, having said that, anything we can do, especially in the STEM program or, or anything creative, as Jamie said, outside the box, how do we get our kids prepared for the technical challenges that are beyond reading and writing, the math, the chemistry, the calculus, you know, that's out there in that world that we live in? And how do we prepare our kids to go out there and be able to pick their way through that world with a superior level of technical education? Not everybody's going to be a chemist or an accountant or lawyer. I understand that. But our kids will have to, if they want to be a mechanic, they'll have to have a serious understanding of mathematics. They'll have to have a serious understanding of electricity. And so, whether they're doing right into the workforce or further education, that whole idea of what we can do to get them ahead of everybody else. I say we don't beat the kids down the road. We need to beat the rest of the world. And I think that's the goal we should be looking for. How do we be the best that we are? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jeanette?
Thanks, Paul. I understand the question was regarding the three options on the table, but let me just preface it with my disappointment that with the plethora of ideas the community had brought forth, that it was so quickly narrowed down to three build-only options. I don't think we went far enough with the community involvement and dissolving the advisory committee so soon to really research those options of building up perhaps, building out, and, and really being an example for the children in reusing, repurposing space that we have. I do understand there is a space issue currently, but let's look a little bit closer at those projections. Perhaps we can make some more modest modifications and be realistic with our spending. Because if you look at a four-year high school option, we might be adding 2,000 seating capacity when we really only need 200 or 300. Then you're going to have an excess of 1,700 seats, let's say. How are we going to fill those? Well, then we can look at open enrollment perhaps. And in my opinion, allowing everyone from outside the district to come in could possibly devalue our, our property. They could live, I'm just going to throw out examples, Baldwin or Ellsworth and then open enroll into Hudson whereby they do not need to live in our community and pay our taxes. So, I feel like we just need to think about the long-term effects of building too large. Additionally, with the three options before us and the research that I've done, of those three, I would be more inclined to support the STEM school at this point. Not only is it more fiscally responsible, but it would set us apart from our competition and allow the students to be prepared for science, technology, engineering, and math without the necessity to go through a four-year schooling. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Bruce?
Thanks, Paul. I agree. I think that the three options that are on the table, we came down to those pretty quickly. I did like the option of getting the advisory council pulled together. I thought it was great to continue to get some more feedback from the community. We also learn from the past, right? So, you look at the decision that took place with the St. Croix Meadows. We did have a referendum that passed. City council then did not rezone. What can we learn from that? And I think ultimately, we need to continue to work together as a community to move past this issue. We talk back to 10 years ago when you have task for, task force that are, are put together and people are trying to get past these issues. I think we need to encourage the board to maybe open the three options back up and continue to explore those. I also feel one of the things that we haven't addressed appropriately, there was a lot of noise around the UU property. And that is also something that will continue to come forward in the community unless we really start to address that, have some good open discussions around it and, and figure this issue out. So, I'm hopeful that we'll get some more discussions around some additional options. I hope we do continue to get the feedback from the community as we go through the, the various options. And I also am hopeful that as a community, as a city, as a school board, we can figure this out. I don't think we're going to find a time where we have lower commercial rates for interest than we do at this point in time. So, the time is now and I'm hopeful that we can get through that together by having some good, strong discussions. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Question number two. Jamie, you'll lead off for this one. This is regarding our graduates and our students. Please explain your views on the preparedness, readiness of Hudson High School graduates for today's marketplace. And secondly, how does this align with the school district's 2025 strategic vision? Jamie?
Well, I think, excuse me, Hudson is well-known to be a high-performing district and I'm very proud of the education that my kids got here. And I want to see that maintained, continue to improve. I think the 2025 HSD vision is on its way because those kids that are starting that are starting kindergarten and I think they're in kindergarten or first grade right now. So, they're just into this program. The ideas of collaboration and global thinking. We've got a curriculum that is varied and that prepares our students. And that's why we need those that want to focus on science or math, that they can do that and have some flexibility. So, I think Hudson does an excellent job. And it wasn't that long ago, we had two or three merit scholars from Hudson and in the recent past have had five go on to be doctors. So, we have some students that are, obviously, we, it's part the district's doing, but it's also part the families that we have. And that's why as a community, we've got a great community and I don't think that we need to make drastic changes in how we're preparing our students. I think we need to roll with the times, though. I think we need to roll with the times, though, and times, that's one constant, is change. And with the technology that we have, we have to keep up, otherwise Hudson will fall behind.
Thank you, Jamie. Jim?
The Gates Foundation, I believe it was yesterday, just released the report on some of their education issues that they've been funding, and one of the things I discovered here in Hudson, not only at the high school level, but at the grade school level, our teachers are world-class here. They're just some of the best I've ever seen. When we first moved here, I was on a road trip, and I got a call on my cell phone from one of the teachers at the middle school, and they said, "Mr. Schrock?" And I thought, "Yeah?" I thought, "What's wrong? You know, what am I going to hear?" He said, "Just want to let you know that Ben is doing really well, and he's making some good friends." And I thought, "What an extraordinary person to go out of their way to call me like that and tell me." And that was my first contact, but since then, years later, I found there's many in the system like that. And you know, one of the things that just really, you know, makes me excited is, what if we unleashed the power to teach? Unleash the power to teach. Let these teachers have no walls with what they want to teach. I understand curriculum, we have to follow curriculum. We have certain standards that we have to do. But could you imagine, and I will quote a movie, Mr. Holland's Opus, or Dead Poets Society? Do you remember what the teachers were like in those? They were exciting their students to go out beyond the walls of anything we can build for them, and do wonderful things that they had never challenged themselves to do before. And so when we look at how our graduates are performing, yeah, let's build on that, let's build on that, let's build that momentum, and let's get our graduates so that when they say they're from Hudson, Wisconsin, people say, "Oh, yeah, I've heard about your school system there. What are you guys doing over there?" Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jim. Jeanette?
My vision would support the 2025 vision that the Hudson School District has. I've had great experiences with North Hudson Elementary. I happen to have a child that is fortunate enough to be in the gifted and talented. The school's been tremendous for him and provided us ample opportunities to help him exceed. I think there is room for improvement. I am a person that is not, would not always be happy with the status quo, but be looking for ways to improve and be more competitive worldwide, so that not only are we at the top in our region, but nationally. So I would ask questions, how can we improve upon that? A couple of the areas that I see personally for improvement would be global literacy. I recently met with the high school principal, Laura Love, and shared these ideas with her. I have personal experience that's relevant, and I would, as a school board member, I would hope that we could all engage and look for ways to improve upon that. Entrepreneurial learning is another area of the vision that I think could use some more resources to bring local business owners in, and really connect them with the students, so they would have opportunities right out of high school to get internships. And then just in general, if you want to segue to the DPI report cards, I think the reports that came out, thank you, showed that our high school definitely has room for improvement. We're only meeting expectations. So I think we just need to regroup, really involve the teachers, find out what's going to be imperative to get the students engaged, so that they're not just teaching for tests, standardized tests. I think we need to help them communicate these goals and make it relevant to life skills. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Bruce?
Thank you. Get an opportunity to listen to students at least once a month in our Rotary Club. We have recognized students of the month, and we just did that yesterday. I have to say, the kids that come in here and speak about the education that they get, and these are seniors, they really rave about the education that they get. Academically, I think we're very strong. The AP courses that we have and the readiness that we have for our kids here is really phenomenal. I think we prepare them very well. I like the HSD 2025 vision plan, I like the SMART goals that are out there, that they've been working on for a number of years. I think when you look at the 21st century skills learning, when it comes down to some of those areas that maybe aren't as tangible for teachers to get into, like critical thinking, problem-solving, and communication skills, these are very important skills that our kids need when they are going to get out into the real world. I think that also, we start pretty young in this district. Ethan, for instance, came home the other night and told me that Mr. Olson asked him a question, "Are you challenged enough? You know, do you feel like you're getting enough challenge here in fourth grade?" And I just, I love the fact that he's engaging, asking that question, and Ethan has an opportunity to respond and potentially bring more challenge on. So I'm very happy with the continued programs that we have here. I think we do a great job, and I'm very excited to continue to think about different areas that we can expand into as a group. Being involved in the Junior Achievement Board, it's really pretty interesting for me, because I get the chance to listen to some pretty good thinkers in this space that are trying to expand beyond what we're traditionally doing today. So, thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Matthew?
I do agree that we have some really, we have some of the best teachers in the district. My grandson does have challenges, and we have addressed that, where he goes to school at Hudson Prairie, and I got to tell you, the teachers there have, we've watched him just blossom. This year, he has taken on just kind of a whole new meaning of his education, has really done well. As far as the high school, the junior high, I do have a granddaughter there, and the teachers there, they have taken her challenges, and they really know how to focus their challenges. I like the curriculum and the education and the direction it's going as of now. I do, however, agree that we, I think we need to listen to our teachers more. I think that in the teachers that I talk to just are not having fun anymore. And that saddens me, because they go to school, they want to make a difference, and I want to be that voice for them, to help them be heard. I just feel that they're not being heard with the ideas that they have. Again, they're, these teachers are with our kids more than any of the school board members, any of the principals, and superintendent, and we need to listen to our teachers, I think, a little bit more, and give them a little bit more space to be creative. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Question number three, Jim, you'll lead this off. With schools being overcrowded, how do we feel about the district continuing to accept open enrollment?
Well, there's a, I guess that's like a Hydra with a lot of roots to it, and you have to consider all the roots involved with what that would entail. And I'll just go to one extreme right away. If it entailed that students of this district were not getting as good of education as they previously had, then of course, that would not be a good outcome to that. If in a measured analysis, it could be proven that, as Jeanette had alluded, if we have open space and we can fill it, and perhaps lessen the burden upon the residents here, well, if it can be done without any harm to the consequences going from those roots, that's something certainly to be considered, and I'll just go back to what I said earlier. Nothing works a hundred percent of the time. And do we have criteria that we can draw on, or models that we can look at to say, "Well, this has worked here for this reason," or "It hasn't worked over here for that reason." And then balance those out and say, "Well, this is the decision that we can come to then, that would seem to make most sense for our district." Thank you.
As earlier, I alluded to the fact that I'm not a fan of open enrollment, considering the space issues at hand. I've written letters to the editor, spoken at board meetings, emailed current board members about this issue. I'd like them to really take into serious consideration the ramifications of continuing to accept open enrollment at the elementary level. I do understand that once they are accepted at the elementary level, you've sort of set a precedence. And although they need to reapply going into middle school, we ran into a problem last year where the administration suggested that they allow a sixth grader in, and now it has set a precedence where we can not be in violation, but it was like discriminatory, because we let one in and didn't let the other in. So now going forward, we're in a situation where we might have to accept all or none. So I'm not an advocate for open enrollment. Again, as I said earlier, if we do build a school to take care of the two hundred-plus seats that we're missing, but we build a school for fifteen, fifteen hundred or two thousand, how are we going to fill that up? And I don't agree with using the open enrollment logic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Bruce?
So open enrollment really isn't a choice that we have here in Hudson. You know, it's something that's set at the state level, and obviously, we've had to make a choice lately, right? That's been something that's been discussed and addressed at our last board meeting. And I don't have a problem with open enrollment. Where I have a problem is the message that it's sending to those that are moving into the community. For those that are looking at schools and trying to understand, hey, where are we going to move, what community do we want to move into? And you start to look at Hudson, and you hear that we're shutting off open enrollment, I just think it sends a poor message. And Hudson's been a beacon in western Wisconsin, and frankly, I want to see it continue that way. And the fact that we are continuing to have discussions around open enrollment, and we can't really accept new people at this point in time, is just a product of the fact that we haven't been able to solve our capacity issue. So I think we need to be very focused on that, not get so focused on the open enrollment discussion. I think if we look at the problem that we have, it's really the capacity issue, and we need to work to solve that. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Matthew?
I have to say, I do not agree with the open enrollment. I hate to turn students away, however, if we do not have the space for them, we should not be burning, putting the burden on our tax, on our tax dollars to try and build space for somebody coming in from outside the community. Again, like I said earlier, when we lived here and our grandchildren were going to come and live with us, they said then, "We didn't know where we're going to put your granddaughter, and we didn't know if we were going to have space." So that said, I guess I do not agree with open enrollment for the fact that we do not have the space to continue to bring kids in, and I don't think it's the taxpayers' responsibility to build more space to bring kids in from other areas for open enrollment.
Thank you, Matthew. Jamie?
Thanks, Paul. Well, as a school board member, I would go on the school board with an open mind and look at these things on a case-by-case, but as a school board member, you need to decide things on the facts. And the fact is, Hudson actually sends out more students than it takes in. And so it's not having, now, it varies based on grades, and we happen to have space in our elementary schools. The problem is, as Jeanette pointed out, that when we have students who have to reapply, and they've already been in the Hudson School District, it's very hard to say no. And I have to just set the record straight as well. It was not the administration that recommended bringing in a sixth grader. It was actually the recommendation of the administration to say no, because the space was not there. The school board, I guess, in listening to the family that was involved, had compassion and decided to let the sixth grader in. So in that one instance, there was a sixth grader added that, you know, in a school that's obviously over capacity. But these are decisions that you have to make, you got to follow the law. That's the other thing that a school board member needs to do, is know the law and follow it, and hopefully, don't get us in a situation where we're being taken into court, because we're making arbitrary decisions when it comes to open enrollment.
Thank you, Jamie. Question number four, Jeanette, this will be your, you'll be first out here. What are your views on the fiscal decisions and condition of the Hudson School District?
Great question, Paul. First, I'll start off by saying that just because it's in the budget does not mean we have to spend it. I think it's very important in the economical climate today to be careful with our budget and save for a rainy day. I can use some examples from the past, as far as how fiscal decisions have been made. The middle school expansion is one. I would have advocated to use that money differently, when we spent approximately two million dollars to add on to cafeteria space, orchestra, et cetera. We did not affect the fourteen cart teachers at the middle school. We didn't add any classroom space on. And not only did we not add classroom space, but we expanded the cafeteria, but didn't create any more efficiency in the lunch line. So the students that I know there are still, you know, scrambling to find time to eat, for example. That could have been addressed in a little bit better manner. Other fiscal decisions this month, teachers, support staff, and administration received pay increases. Now, whether or not you agree with the pay increases under the economic conditions, what I disagreed with was the distribution of those, for example. There were two different compensation studies done, one for administration and one for the rest of the staff. And if you look at them, they should have been identical, if you want to not exacerbate the disconnect that's going on between teachers and administration. I would have liked to see those two comparability studies be identical, so that we're not giving our administration fifty-seven-hundred-and-thirty-four-dollar raise on average, and then you have approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-two teachers that we're not getting raises to get them up to the median, only a hundred and sixty. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. Bruce?
Thanks. This is a tough one. I think that there's, it's easier to focus on some of the negatives that come up when you're dealing with this type of a discussion. I certainly see some things that take place where I, you know, scratch my head. But I think overall, you need to look at the body of work. And, you know, when you look at the annual meeting minutes that came out, I think that there's some pretty interesting statistics out there. Hudson's total revenue rank is three-hundred-and-sixty-seven. It's the lowest out of the total of three-hundred-and-sixty-seven school districts. Revenue, and I had to get this through my head, from a business side, I think of revenue and I think of selling something, but technically, you know, it's really the tax dollars that are being used. Hudson's the lowest in the state per student. That's a pretty good statistic when you look at the body of work. One of the other numbers that's out there is the educational cost per member. And again, you look at where Hudson comes in, it's three-hundred-and-sixty-second. It's the sixth lowest out of three-hundred-and-sixty-seven schools in the school district. Again, I think that the board, and through the years, the board has been very fiscally responsible in the Hudson community. Just trying to understand some of these facts, I think the, a couple of other quick, interesting tidbits that I've continued to pick up as I go through this is, last year, in the 2011, 2012, they came in under levy around twelve-point-two million dollars. This year, in this year's budget, they came in about thirteen-point-nine. If you look at the rolling last three years, it's twenty-nine million dollars under levy. So the board could have used additional levy monies to go after some of the challenges. I do kind of question, you know, with all of the capacity issues, why we haven't maybe been addressing this, but I understand why. We haven't been able to come to consensus as a community about using our money in a smart way. Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Matthew?
Again, we have, I have watched and listened to the buildings, the raises that was given. I saw the school board minutes on that. I do agree with Jeanette that, I'm not sure that that study was as thorough as it could have been. I was not happy to see that the upper-paid staff ended up with a, quite a bit larger raise than the lower-paid staff. It costs the taxpayers about nine-hundred thousand dollars. As you can see from Bruce's, what he brought up there, you know, do we have nine-hundred thousand dollars? The schools don't sell something to collect revenue. They take. They take from the taxpayers. They take from us. And if we continue to take from taxpayers, to take from us, the problem is, we're going to end up like New Richmond. Their housing market has plummeted. They built a ninety-million-dollar school, and they can't afford to fund it. I don't think that Hudson is ready for a ninety-million-dollar school. I don't think we'll end up being able to fiscally responsibly, I know that I can't. I can't look my fellow neighbor in the eye and say, "Can you give us, can you give me the school board members another five-hundred dollars a year, another thousand dollars a year?" That's a lot of money for a lot of people, and I think we need to be more fiscally responsible on how we spend our money. I do not believe that they are spending the money, our money, very wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Jamie?
Could you repeat the question, please?
What are your views on the fiscal decisions and condition of the Hudson School District?
Well, obviously, there's fiscal decisions being made all the time, but I think you do have to look over a period of time on those decisions, and without question, Hudson has come out very well on the fiscal decisions, is some of the statistics that Bruce was pointing to, I would have pointed to as well, is that total is that total cost per student Hudson is like fourth from the bottom in the entire state. So they have done a very good job when it comes to fiscal, being fiscally sound. Now, we can argue about whether or not this teacher got more or that teacher got more. In general, Hudson needs to be competitive when it comes to the teachers because of the market we're in. The fact is, if we have Hudson teachers that are getting up there at 10 years and 15 years, those are the ones that are higher compensated than the ones that are new. And if they can go into the Twin Cities with a half-hour drive and earn $15,000 and $20,000 more, we're going to lose those good teachers. Now, it's true that the teachers at the bottom end of that scale, the lower compensated, didn't get the raises. But I think when you're talking about trying to be competitive, these are things you have to look at. You have to look at the overall picture. And these are not simple things that you can stand back and criticize and say, "We shouldn't have done that, shouldn't have done this," because you don't know what's going to happen next year. With the budget problems down in Madison, you never know what the state aid is going to be. And just looking at our school budget over the last five years, we were at $51.96 million total in '08-'09. Now we're at $52,732. So that's gone up 1.5% of our, in five years. Now, the bad news is that the state aid portion has gone down 10%, 10 to 11%. Therefore, in order to keep balance, we've had to increase the levy 10 to 11% over that five-year period. It's still less than the rate of inflation, and I think that it's been fiscally sound.
Thank you, Jamie. Jim?
Thank you. You know, as with all families and school systems and businesses, we have money in and money out. And as a school board member, or a business owner, or a family member, if the out is more than the in, we have a problem. We're seeing that in our society in general from what we go. So if we look at the trend from budgets, everything's going up. We know that. The cost of electricity is higher, the cost of gasoline is higher. It hits home to us. But it's very easy for a school board to ask for more money. It's really easy. "We need more money." And when I heard of the last levy that came out, I thought, "Well, okay, we'll figure that out in our family. We'll figure that out." But are other families figuring that out? Are other families in that position to be able to say, "Gee, another $400 a year, another $500 a year. Oh, and this went up and that went up too." And I think people, taxpayers, including myself, I put myself in there, were bombarded with so many people in our pocket these days that I think a responsible school board member, which I would plan on being, would have to say, "Wait a minute. We really have to look at what is really, truly necessary. And I know we have to balance things. We have to be competitive." I understand that. Sometimes I wonder if being at the lowest is the best. I think somebody already made the comment, "Well, the cheapest isn't always the best and the most expensive isn't always the best either." But are we doing, are we spending the money in the right way and making it go in the funnel so that it comes out at the right end and hits the spots that are most appropriate? And I think that's what the role of a school board member is, to really look at that very closely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Question number five. We'll start with Bruce. We're looking, this is a leadership-type question. So Hudson as a community tends to be very opinionated. Can, I don't know who would disagree with that. Can each of you give an example where you demonstrated courageous leadership? Bruce?
So I look at the organization that I work in today. R. Donnelly's a very large global player, about 60,000 employees. And you, our organization has gone through some pretty big challenges lately. We're a major printing organization. Print is not one of the growing areas in business today. It's certainly on the decline with books and magazines. And I think our organization needs to change and have some meaningful change. Recently, our COO has been, I think, having a very controlling situation. Employee morale has been down. Our attitude towards continuing to drive improvement in the organization is also down. I read a book recently. It was called 360 Degree Leader. Talks about influencing leadership both up and down. And I think that there's a lot to that. Utilizing the top talent that we have, in this case, the teachers in the school setting. In our organization, we've got a lot of great leaders. And we need to pull together, and we've done that. We've pulled together as a group. I've worked with other leaders in our organization to push changes up. I've sat down with the president of our organization, had a four-hour conversation in which I was very specific around some of the areas that we need to change. We work as a team as we continue to bring the real challenges forward within our organization. But we also have to work down with those that are out working hard every day and making sure that they stay motivated, making sure that they stay excited about the job that they have, going home with their families at night and being happy when they do that. So it's very challenging to be in that type of an environment, but we have to be leaders every day.
Thank you, Bruce. Matthew?
I have brought kids up into the boundary waters and I've had to lead some of the toughest groups. One group in particular was a boys' home from Chicag, from Chicago. And honest to God, we almost decided to go back after our first night. It's tough to be thick-skinned sometimes. But by doing that and by showing them leadership, by showing them passion, by showing, by showing them, kids want to know how much they care, how much they're cared for, how much they're loved. And by doing that and by showing that, we were able to bring this, this boys' group together. That's part of leadership. That's part of taking something from the worst and bringing it to the best. And in my profession, I'm a tax accountant. I have to talk to people every day, especially this time of year. I get, have to calm people down when I tell them they have to pay more tax. And so, you know, I can take the criticisms. I know there's going to be criticisms. I've had, I've had discussions with teachers in the school district and we walk away friends. I mean, you have to be able to agree to disagree. You have to have the leadership to be able to lead and to guide people through what they want, what your vision is. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Jamie?
Well, with that question, have you shown courageous leadership? A specific example, do I have a George Washington or Abraham Lincoln moment? I don't say that I have. I think that as parents, we all exhibit courage in being able to raise our kids. I think getting involved in the community, maybe sitting up here is showing some courage. But I think that, you know, with the preface to that question of Hudson having this reputation of being, you know, divided community or opinionated community, yeah, we've had some issues over the years that have. And I think that that can lead to strong feelings and emotions. But I think that part of the courage is coming forward to be a leader, to bring people with diverse viewpoints together. And I think that's maybe what we needed to do this last year with going forward on the St. Croix Meadows. A little bit more collaboration between the city and the school district and sitting down and trying to come and find positives and work towards a common goal. I think that that's what Hudson needs and that's what I want to be able to provide.
Thank you, Jamie. Jim?
I once heard leadership, perhaps not courageous leadership, defined as the ability to overcome your fears to get something done. Because we all have fears when you have to set up, step up to the plate and do something that may not be a popular thing. One of the qualities that I've admired in leaders is they know when to lead, they know when to follow, and they know when to get out of the way. And I think courageous leadership, as it is applied to an incident in my past, I had about 100 employees that I managed and one of them was probably, in terms of production, the best employee there was. But he was also the worst employee in terms of how he dealt with everybody else in the organization. In short, he was a cancer. And so, of course, we did all the corrective measurements, the verbal warnings, the written warnings and all that. And one day, I knew that I would have to let him go, even though he was significantly contributing to the income of our organization. But I also knew that by letting him go, the people that looked to me for my leadership qualities or my coaching skills or my management skills, whatever you want to put on that, they needed to have him gone because he wasn't helping any of them in their jobs or excel in their jobs or advance to the next thing. So I did let him go. And I had to answer to some people about why all of a sudden we're losing some money on a person that's not there. But, you know, within a month or so, there was some vindication because everybody else stepped up to the plate. They started to produce even more because now this cancer wasn't there to drag away from what they were doing. So I don't know if I would call that a courageous leadership decision, but it was one that when I woke up the day that I had to do it, I said, "I would rather be somewhere else than do this because this is going to hurt an awful lot." And it did. I bled because you're dealing with a human life at that point in time. Courageous, I don't know. Leadership, it had to be done. And sometimes that's all leadership is. You recognize what has to be done and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jeanette?
That's a tough question for me because I don't like the spotlight on myself to speak about things that I do. I try to be a leader every day in all aspects of my life. At business, I try to lead by example and be more of a servant manager, a leader, walking side by side with them, trying to lift them up, bringing out the best in them. But for me personally, there have been adults in my life and children that I have found really at the bottom of their life and had really had lost hope in where they were going. And for me to be able to give them hope, give them some opportunity, bring out the best in them and then let them go, as Jim said, knowing when to lead and when to let go, there's really no greater feeling than that, than to lift them up. And I see many teachers as being very courageous. And I would really defer this to them because they take care of so many different students every day from a wide variety of backgrounds. And they're the ones that truly have the courage, in my opinion. I have two children. I can't imagine handling 25 in a day. It must be daunting. So I would say that they would be more courageous than I am.
Thank you, Jeanette. The final question, and Matthew, you'll lead off with this one, is number, it's a six question. As a new school board member, how would you work with divergent opinions on the board?
One more time?
As a new school board member, how would you work with divergent opinions on the board, differing opinions on the board?
Kind of like what I said, you know, with the last, last question. You have to, you have to be able to listen. You have, we're all going to have different opinions. And that's, that's the beauty part of being a human being, is being able to have the different opinions. And it's, you have to take the time to take that person's opinion and you have to take the time to process it and what I think. And you need to take the time to be able to sit down with that person and see where they're coming from. How would I handle their opinion? I would first want to research what their, what their goal of that opinion is. I would want to hear what their viewpoints are, their study that they've done on it. You have to be open-minded. If you're not open-minded, especially on a school board, you're going to miss. You're going to miss out on what, what another board member is going to bring to the table. You're going to miss out on what a community person's going to bring to the table. You're going to miss out on what a teacher's going to bring to the table. My viewpoints are not always going to be the right viewpoints. And so I, for me, I think that being able to be on a diverse school board, I think is the, is the best way to get a lot of the problems that we have solved because you take the time to listen to one another. You take the time to maybe see something in a way that you hadn't seen it before. So I guess that's how I would handle it. Thank you.
Matthew? Thank you. Jamie?
Well, I think to sum it up, how would I deal with differing or divergent viewpoints? And one word is, listen. I think that what happens with opinions is, just because you state them louder, doesn't make them any more true. And I think an opinion needs to be based on fact. And so when you listen to the opinion and then listen to the factual underpinning and have the open mind, maybe, maybe that person is right. But I think what you need to do is have the ability to get to the core, get to the truth and be able to admit when you're wrong. Okay? And there will be people who might be on the opposite side of the opinion or opposite side of the issue. But if you can get the facts out and then end up getting everyone on the same side, I think that's a big success. And so doing the homework, and that's what I have to do for my job, I have to get to the truth. If you go in front of a jury with something that's not the truth, they'll smell it a mile away. And so you need to have the truth, work with the facts. And when you do that, I think that the opinions can become less divergent.
Thank you, Jamie. Jim?
Well, I grew up in Detroit, Michigan, downtown Detroit, which if you're familiar with it, is not a whole lot left anymore. But it used to be a pretty vibrant place with all kinds of people there. And as a youngster growing up, if you didn't listen to other people's opinions on the playground or in the schools, you got beat up pretty good. And it became a lesson to say, "Well, you know, these other people do have opinions and they're not always right. They're not always wrong." And it taught me that you can be strong-minded without being strong-headed. Strong-minded means, as Jamie just said, you've researched your stuff. You know, you have some clear indication of what you think is right and what is wrong. There may be still some gray areas in something. But as long as you can be cognizant of that, you can work very easily with people with different opinions because, you know, that's what you learn from. I've quite often changed my opinion after listening to something else with a well-thought-out argument. One of the best, some of the best things I like to read are people that really know their subjects, that they can, they can say something so well that, "Oh, I didn't realize that about that." And I can learn something and take it away from there. So dealing with divergent opinions is not an issue as far as I'm concerned, as long as that opinion has some thought behind it. We all have to have thought behind what we say. We can't just, use Archie Bunker. He used to say stupid things. That was his opinion. Was that a right opinion, a wrong opinion? No. So you have to have a thought-out opinion. And once you do, either learn from it, you can talk to it, or maybe you can try to change it. And that's, that's what we do in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jeanette?
Each candidate has brought a good point so far. I actually agree on all this so far. It reminds me of being in a foreign country and you don't speak the language. So how do you communicate? You need to find things that you do know in common and kind of grow from there. So if you had divergent opinions on an issue, I think each person should be allowed to share their facts. And does this come from best practice solutions and methods? Is it in all of the stakeholders' best interest? Is it in the students' best interest? Because ultimately, that's what we, who we need to look out for. I have no problem listening. As I mentioned earlier, I have two ears and one mouth. So I will listen and take it all in before I try to come to a common solution that we can come up with and move forward with that.
Thank you, Jeanette. Bruce?
Couple of things that I think are very important coming in to a group. It's to really establish trust and build relationships. And that's at the framework. If you can build those relationships and have a trusting relationship, I think that conversations that you can have, I think, really start to take hold. I look at the Guide for Candidates. It talks about qualities of a school board member, the capability to articulate the philosophy and goals of the school and to listen carefully to the criticisms offered by others with differing views and to come in with an open mind and a readiness to learn. When you come in and you want to spend the time that you do in a school board role, your focus is for the kids. You're really trying to make sure that you're looking out for the best interests of the kids. And you do that in a fiscally responsible way. When you build the relationships that you have and you can synergize as a group, I think you can really get some things done. And I think one other aspect that I like to bring in my dealings, at least in business today and other board positions that I sit on, is just bring a positive attitude. To really have a positive attitude, I think, allows you to just keep that open mind. To really have a positive attitude, I think, allows you to just keep that open mind, make sure that you stay positive in your interactions and the communications that you have with one another. And it's gotten me to where I am today. It's one thing that I sure focus on with my kids as we talk about some staples in our lives. That positive attitude is one that's very important. Thanks.
All right, that concludes the question and answer part. We'll move on to the final piece of our discussion tonight with closing statements. And as I said earlier, each candidate will be allowed three minutes, and we'll start with Jeanette.
Oh, thank you. As we all know, the Board of Education plays a critical role in determining the policy that will improve the education of our children. We are fortunate to live in a community where education is paramount, but each year we face tough decisions on how to allocate our resources. We have a space issue that I see firsthand, and we've discussed here tonight. I believe the problem can be solved in a fiscally conservative manner that provides value for our students and the taxpayers. As an independent and critical thinker, I will focus on best practice educational outcomes. A strong board requires members to think strategically and focus on the comprehensive needs of the schools and the community. Although our middle and elementary schools received excellent marks this past year, there is room for improvement in our high school. I'm a firm believer in surveying the teachers for their confidence level in the administration and to receive their input as to how to best improve any lagging educational areas. Making Hudson a stronger visionary district can be accomplished through what I call ACT, A-C-T, accountability, community engagement, and transparency. With the millions of dollars we spend in our district, that calls for a high level of accountability, which should be based on outcomes. We need to be accountable for the number of students that go to college, enroll in trade school, or just enter the workforce. By accountability, I also mean teacher and parent satisfaction and student safety. Community engagement. Hudson does have a wonderful conglomeration of community members with a wide variety of educational and workforce backgrounds. I would allow you to be actively involved in the evolution of education here and in the future implementation process. The board should not stifle other members of the board or those in the community who ask legitimate questions. Therefore, transparency for me is a key component to my moral compass. Eighteen years of running successful businesses has taught me to have true accountability. You must be transparent. I promise to listen to all stakeholders, independently research, and verify that information, and then to formulate creative solutions with other members of the board. It would be an honor to serve on the Board of Education, and I ask for your vote on February 19th. Thank you again.
Thank you, Jeanette. Jim?
Well, I'd just like to say my compliments to all the candidates here, some well-thought-out answers. And, you know, I have a lot of confidence that no matter who's elected, there's going to be two darn good people in there, because there's five of them up here tonight, so you've got some choices to make. And thank you for the great moderation, and thank you for the questions that you brought forth, very thought-provoking. And when we leave here tonight, we've got a lot to think about. Now, I've entered into this to fill a need. In my professional career and life, I've often found myself in the role, team leader, mediator, coach, consensus builder, and babysitter. And all those things that I have experienced in there, I think, makes me a very good candidate to fill some of the capabilities that are going to be required as we move along through the 21st century on the Hudson School Board. I think I have a good way of making people understand not only what we need to accomplish, but why we need to accomplish it. You know, I spoke earlier about my pact to the citizens of the Hudson School District, participation, accountability, collaboration, and transparency. These are the four pillars of my candidacy to which I firmly believe are critical school board requirements. What I offer is a contract of trust and a spirit decor and a genuine determination to examine all possibilities while reminding myself and ourselves that it's for the children. Collectively, we can determine a progressive and winning destiny, and one that we can look back on years from now and say, "That was raider pride at work." So thank you very much for your consideration, and I ask for your vote in the primary on February 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jamie?
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for, again, hosting us, the parent groups, and thank you folks for being here. One of the quotes that I admire, Teddy Roosevelt said, "Criticism is necessary and useful. It's often indispensable, but can never take the place of action." And when you're looking for a candidate to begin on our school board, you want someone who's going to act, and you can judge them by their past actions and where they've invested their time and treasures and talents. And I told you a little bit in the introduction about myself that I have put a lot of time and passion into my church, our YMCA, the schools and children education, and Rotary. And I throw Rotary in there, that's the newest thing in my life. I mean, like I said, it's about six years that I've been in there. But there's a couple of points that I think are very applicable to how I would conduct myself as a school board member. We have the four-way test in Rotary, to everything that we think, say, or do. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? It's not us versus them. This doesn't have to be a community like that. We can come together and figure out what's the truth, reach that common goal, do it in a way that's not going to strap our seniors or our fixed-income people. I like the direction that the school has been going. We've got a great school district, you know, with that HSD 2025 and the strategic vision for setting standards. I believe in high standards for our children and high standards for our teachers and for our administration. We need assessment. How are we doing? We have SMART goals that every year we're measuring ourselves, how are we doing on that path, and then holding people accountable. These are the things that I would do on the school board, and I don't want to see our district, what happened to the district over in the Twin Cities. And I asked him if I could talk about this. My best friend, who's in the audience here, was on the school board. When he decided to run, White Bear Lake was a divided community. There was low morale. Student-teacher ratios were rising. Levees weren't getting passed, and they weren't, and it was not a good direction. And that's what motivated him to run. And it took several years, but they got things turned around, and now White Bear Lake has a much better attitude with regard to their schools. We already have a good attitude. I want to be able to see that continue, and I want to do it again in a fiscally responsible way.
Thank you, Jamie. Matthew?
I decided to run for school board mainly because some people asked me to. But I started looking at the need of the space issue, and I started looking at the need that the teachers were telling me that they had and that their voices weren't being heard. I believe that everybody has greatness. I believe that all children have greatness. We need to bring that greatness out. I do believe that our teachers in the Hudson area are excellent teachers. My grandkids have had excellent teaching, and I'd like to just continue with that. I'd like to be able to see the teachers expand their horizons, be able to teach more creative. I'd like to be able to help with the fiscally resp- be resp- be fiscally responsible for those taxpayers out there. One of the things that, that I had said earlier, that I believe that we, we need to look at all avenues so that we don't go down a path that we can't turn back on as far as building space. I want to be able to, what I have found with the school board currently is they took the need, but they didn't sell the product. And you've got to be able to look the people in the eye and say, "This is what you're going to get with the money that you're giving us," and not come back with surprises. That is one of the things that just really irritates me is, "We want to buy this, we're going to do this, but we don't have a real big plan. We'll wait and see how much money we get." We need to be fiscally responsible. I am running because I just believe that we need to be more prepared before we go to the public with the decisions that we have. So I too ask for your vote on February 19th. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Bruce?
Thanks, Paul, and thanks again, everyone, for the great questions tonight and echo Jim's comments. A great panel up here tonight as well. Look for a good return on our investment. We need to look at what we're doing here in Hudson. I think to be fiscally responsible means just that, to really look at the dollars that we're spending and making sure that the investments that we're making are sound and that the return on that is something that's going to be positive for everyone in the community. I've served on JA, I've served in Rotary, I've served at our church in numerous ways, and I've had a lot of fun doing all of those things. When I was coming out of high school, went into college, I was having, you know, struggle. It was not easy to make that transition. Once I got more comfortable with it, I went back to our high school and sat down with the students and talked to them about the transition from high school to college. And I had a lot of fun doing that. Once I left college and went to the business environment, realized you don't get a syllabus anymore. Nobody's going to tell you what you need to do every day. It makes it a real challenge as you're starting out your career. So I went back to the college, back to UW-OKLAR, and talked with the students about that transition and being independent and taking the opportunity to advance your career and not wait for it to come to you. I'm now taking this opportunity to, to serve in a new capacity, and I hope that you vote for me on the 19th, and I hope that you vote for me on April 2nd. Passion's a pretty interesting word. Passion isn't something that you can teach. The one thing that has been fun for me as I've gone through this process is I've actually picked up energy along the way and have had a lot of fun meeting some great people we have in the Hudson community. We do have a great community here. There are a lot of positive people, and I continue to see it every day that I'm in the community. And it's been a lot of fun for me to, to meet just some extraordinary folks in town, and I look forward to that continuing. I think that through this experience, either way, we'll come out winning because really gotten to have a chance to meet some great folks here. So with that, thanks again, everyone, for coming tonight. Ethan and Andrew, make sure to get back to the door and block it and pass out some flyers and tell people about Colati's coming up on February 11th. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you, folks. That concludes our discussion for tonight. Please. And one, I want to thank the parent groups who put this on, and also especially to the candidates and wish all five of you good luck. There's five votes out here, we only get two, so make sure we all vote on February 19th. Thank you.